Welcome, everybody. With a quorum being present and today being May 4th, the warrant has been signed, posted, and received and disseminated. So I'll now call this meeting to order. First of all, I would like to introduce our two head tables here. To my left, I have Selectman Donald Pipschinsky, Selectman Jerry Devine, Selectwoman Joyce Chungalo, Chairwoman Molly Keegan, Town Council Joel Bard, Town Administrator David Nixon, Town Clerk Jessica Spankable. On my right, we have the Finance Committee, and I would like to say publicly for the first time, congratulations and thank you for all the work you did on this year's budget. Closest to me, I have Mr. Tom Pitta, Gabriel Owen, Ms. Teri Ushko, Ms. Valerie Hood, and Ms. Amy Fiden. And I'm your moderator, Mr. Brian West. I will be using town meeting time. That's the rules of this meeting. Basically, the big guidelines. We have two microphones up here. If you wish to speak to an article, please come to a microphone and you'll be recognized. State your name and address so everyone knows who you are and where you reside. I ask that you speak once to an article unless everybody else has already spoken, and then you can get up and speak a second time. Please refrain from speaking about a prior speaker. Please keep things to the motion or the article at hand and not to any prior speaker to you. That helps to move the meeting along. And basically, anything I deem unnecessary or unfair, I'll take care of that when it happens. To start tonight, I'm going to call on Mr. Devine to give out the Fred Oakley Award, and then we'll be doing some dedications. All right, we'll do the pledge first. Would everybody please rise? We'll pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Mr. Devine.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. Thanks, everybody, for joining us this evening. As you see, our Select Board side's a little light this evening. John Wishkevitz is a little under the weather. Otherwise, he'd be here. He worked and helped us very much throughout this process, and we want to wish him well and hope he's feeling better. The Fred Oakley Award was established by the Select Board to honor members of the community who embody the spirit of volunteerism and service to the town of Hadley. The 2016 recipient of this award is Mr. Glenn Clark. Mr. Clark has been a volunteer all his life. If you count his service in the U.S. Navy, in the ammunition ship during the Korean War to the present day. His total volunteer activity is truly impressive. In 1968, Glenn was appointed to his first Hadley volunteer position, the School Building Needs Committee and Regional School Planning Board. That was just the beginning of a string of appointments that have lasted for half a century. Next followed the appointment to the Water Department Study Committee, and in 1970, followed by an appointment to the three-year term on the Hadley Finance Committee. This followed in 1989 by a stint representing Hadley on the Hampshire as a Hampshire County Commissioner. He also served in the Search Committee for two school superintendents, and that wasn't enough for Glenn either. He also served as an empire for the Hadley Lassie League and served on many boards of Northampton's Children Aid and Family Services for 30 years, Hadley Farm Museum for 22 years, and was an active volunteer for the Port of Phillips-Hodnington House for many years as well. In 1993, Glenn was elected to the Hadley Select Board and served two terms. What was unique about his election was he ran with just his name on the ballot. There wasn't a sign out there, no fundraisers, no campaigns. Glenn's name was enough on the ballot to get him elected, and he served Hadley very well. In 2010, Glenn's financial skills were again needed, and Glenn accepted another three-year appointment to the Finance Committee. Somewhere along the line, Glenn even volunteered to paint the library in North Hadley. Glenn served the Hadley Housing Authority as a governor's appointee for many years as well. Glenn's most recent achievement was chairperson to the Council on Aging. Under his leadership, in the Fall Town Meeting of 2016, an article was passed to construct a new senior center. A subsequent override question passed the ballot and the funding for the new handicap-accessible, one-story, energy-efficient senior center for Hadley's growing senior population is in the works. Hadley owes a lot of thanks to Glenn Clark for his tireless devotion to our community, and he's the epitome of the idea of asking, "Ask not what your community can do for you. Instead, ask what you can do for your community." On a personal note, 35 years ago, when I went to Western New England College, I had an accounting teacher that I never met in my life, and it was Mr. Glenn Clark. And as college freshmen are sometimes do, might've got myself in a little bit of trouble. So it was the second semester, and the first semester I'd had Mr. Clark, and the college saw fit to tell me that I probably should find a different place to reside. I was still welcome to belong to the college, but I maybe should find a different place. I went to see Mr. Clark, and I said, "Jeez, I've got this little bit of a predicament I got myself into." And he said, "Well, let's see what we can do." So on Monday morning, I went down to see the dean of students, and he said, "Sit down, Mr. Devine. There's a fellow that I respect very much, and he has a lot of good things to say about your family and says you come from pretty good stock. So we're going to give you another shot." And I never had any more problems at the Western New England College, and I owe a little bit of gratitude to Glenn for that. And just this last Monday, I picked Mr. Clark up because not only does he volunteer for our community, but he also has been a director at the Fairgrounds in Northampton for many, many years and is a well-respected member over there. So I'd like you to ask if you could stand and please give a round of applause for Mr. Glenn Clark, the Fred Oakley recipient this year.
Volunteer because our organization is me. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you, Mr. Devine. I will now call on Selectwoman Joyce Chungalo.
This year, we're dedicating the annual town report to two wonderful individuals. The first one is Marilyn Judah, and hers is in memoriam. It's sad sometimes that we don't do this when people are with us, but we certainly don't want it to be a miss that we would forget someone either. Marilyn Judah saw many children go through her classrooms here at the Hopkins, and she was just a wonderful person to our community. Marilyn was born and raised... I don't know if her daughter is Jessica here? Hi. Marilyn was born and raised, thank you, in Staten Island, New York. She held a double BFA from UMass in Painting, Studio Arts, and Art Education, and was awarded a Master's of Technology in Education by Leslie University. She was a professional artist and photographer as well as the art teacher for Hopkins Academy. During her career at Hopkins, Marilyn advocated for community support and funding to integrate arts, technology, and multimedia into the classroom. She was a director and designer of two-wall murals at Hopkins Academy, the Pioneer Valley Historical Mural Project, which is located in our cafetorium, and the Hopkins Academy 350th mural, which is in 2012, which is on the staircase going upstairs out in the main lobby. She also designed and orchestrated the building of the HEA Parade float for the 350th Anniversary Celebration in 2009. She was one of the original four co-founders of the Hadley Art Association and twice served the town of Hadley as a member of the Hadley Cultural Council. She lived by her essential truths that life is good and that there is a universal creator who is always present and that laughter and humor can brighten everyone's days. But her greatest pride was raising her daughter Jessica and her grandson Deacon. She was a consummate humanitarian and dedicated educator, and she certainly will be missed by many.
I would now like to call on Selectman Mr. Donald Pipschinsky.
This year, we dedicated the annual report to two people. The second person is Raymond Shala. Raymond was appointed to the Board of Assessors in 1966, and he's still going strong after 51 years. He's still on the board. He was appointed by John Koloski, Julian Phil, and Edward Walzac. Ray was an avid farmer in his early years, operating a farm in North Hadley. He married his wife Marion Zinzare Kostick in 1977. Raymond Longwood, his wife, owned and operated Mountain Crest Antiques, and they still do. The old Hadley Flea Market, one of the true gems of Hadley. For almost 40 years, they've operated this business. Ray and Marion enjoy traveling the back roads of the northeast hunting treasurers that they could sell in their shop. Raymond enjoyed his leisure time. He loved to play golf and candlepin bowling, and I can attest to that. I went out a few times with Ray when he was a little bit younger. I think he's put his clubs away for now, though. He once bowled 100 strings of bowling to celebrate Pioneer Bowling Alley's 50-year anniversary. I don't even know how many hours that would've took to do, but I'll have to ask him. From spring to fall, Ray can be found in places he loves the most, tending to his large garden and riding his golf cart managing the flea market. He cherishes family and four great-grandchildren as well as many friends he has made over the years and enjoys a good meal at Whately Inn. If you ask Ray to describe himself, he would say simply, "I'm a very simple person." Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Pipschinsky. Congratulations, Ray. Would you like to say a few words? Once again, congratulations and thank you. Okay, our first order of business tonight will be what we call a consent agenda. We've done this, I think, for four or five years now. What it is, is articles that are housekeeping articles within the warrant. We package them up. And just so everybody knows the rules, I'm going to read the motion, and it's going to have the article numbers associated in that motion. If you object to having that article in a consent agenda, all you have to do is raise your hand and yell "Hold", in which case that article goes back into its rightful place within the warrant. After I read that motion, hopefully, everybody's had a chance to have a copy of the consent agenda. I'll allow people to look at it, and then we will vote on the consent agenda. And if you have any questions, please feel free to come to a microphone, and somebody on the Select Board or the Finance Committee will be happy to answer any questions. Does everybody understand? Okay, moving forward. So the consent agenda for annual town meeting, May 4th, 2017, reads as follows. Move that the town take articles 1, 2, 3, 7, and 15 out of order that they are to be passed as a consent in accordance with the motion shown in the consent agenda distributed this evening and further allow the officers, department heads, and agents of the town to address the town meeting on the matters as may be informational. Consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by raising your green card. Consent agenda passes, 118 to 1. Now, at this time, I'd like to call on Chairwoman Molly Keegan. She would like to give you a quick update on what's new and what's going on in the town of Hadley, and then we'll jump right into the rest of our articles.
So first, I'd like to thank everyone who came out tonight to celebrate our democracy and civil discourse. And I want to echo Brian's comments on behalf of the Select Board. I think last fall, you recognized we were having some struggles in terms of staffing up the Finance Committee. And not only have these five individuals exercised a willingness to volunteer for the town, but they've been doing just a fabulous job, coming up to speed. I'm sure we'll all be fighting in no time, but I mean, it's been a sheer pleasure working with them so far. Can you hear? Yeah. Since our Fall Town Meeting, voters fully supported several capital improvements, including the construction of a fire substation, new senior center, and a grant application that will fund over 50% of the cost of a new library. So huge thank you on that. Tonight, you'll be presented with a budget that, for lack of a better way of putting it, represents the best we believe we can do within our current revenue constraints. Hadley has benefited from continued growth, although it has been seriously curbed due to the ongoing gas moratorium. And we are not likely to see any relief for at least another two years. The Commonwealth is working on their own budget shortfall for the fiscal year, so we should not plan for any increase in state aid. Tonight's budget reflects a best effort to keep existing services going with the dollars at hand. We have also been able to use existing revenues to fund one additional full-time firefighter. We continue to be very concerned about the strain, call volume, and inspections that are putting on our existing staff and call force. Our fire chief originally requested a move to a full-time day force to be supplemented with an overnight call force, but we are unable to find the dollars to make it work in this budget cycle. But the need remains. So what is not addressed in tonight's budget? The school department has been plagued with an increase in mandated uncontrollable costs. As a result, they're using a more significant percentage of their school choice reserves to make it work. And then there are initiatives previously discussed, such as adding human resource and information technology support. Both functions, we consider, as investments that will pay for themselves over time. So over the summer months, the Finance Committee and the Select Board, with input from the schools, will be continuing to work on achieving as much efficiency in daily operations as possible, looking at opportunities presented through natural employee turnover and possible regionalization of certain functions. But we do need to tell you that we will simultaneously be researching various scenarios to enhance revenue. That's also known as an override. So to be clear, nothing presented this evening involves an override. If indeed this does become a future path, we're committed to doing it once and to doing it right, meaning that all town needs must be taken into account. Taxpayer input must be considered, and we need to be confident that current revenues are being spent wisely. So we'll have more to report on this front well in advance of your Fall Town Meeting. So with that said, David, would you like to read the reserve balances?
So just some reserve balances. Free cash remaining after our special town meeting of the fall, 2016, That'll be recertified in July at a much larger amount, but that's what we have at this particular point. Our water reserves are $413,576. Our sewer reserves are $199,168. And again, all of these numbers will change after July 1st, and they should go up. Our stabilization account as of June 30th, 2016, And then our CPA funds available for appropriation stand at $1,983,125. And then available in our newly-created Hadley Media Enterprise Fund Do you need to hear some of those numbers again?
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. We're going to move right to Article 4. Article 4 is the article that establishes our revolving funds in the town. There's a full page of them there. I'm going to read the motion, and then I will allow everybody a chance to look through that page. And then I'll ask for a motion to be moved and seconded. So the motion reads, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the following revolving funds for certain town departments under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E/ Half for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017." I have a motion and a second. I'll allow everyone a chance to look at those. If you have any questions, please feel free to come up to one of the two microphones. Seeing no questions, all in favor of Article 4, please signify with your green card. Opposed. Article 4 passes unanimously. Moving on to Article 5. Article 5 reads as follows. Move that Article 5 of the annual town meeting, May 4th, be amended to state special town meeting... Is that right? Is that Article 5? Okay, so we're doing a housekeeping here. This is special town meeting from 2001, historical records cleaning, 02-691-5300-A, number 5, in the amount of $1,879.45. And further, that the town adjust the accounts as printed in the warrant as delineated in Article 5 of the annual town meeting warrant for May 4th, 2017, as amended and incorporated by reference herein. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. And Mr. Nixon will speak to this.
This is a three-in-one housekeeping article. We're just doing a lot of cleanup here. There's no impact upon taxes, water rates, or sewer rates for this article. The first thing that we're doing is that we're cleaning up an accounting issue having to do with the sewer line replacement on Lorraine Lane. So we double-counted something, so this makes that adjustment so we don't have to show a deficit, even if it's a bookkeeping deficit. So just cleaning up the Lorraine Lane sewer replacement project there. The next thing that we're doing is the... We're taking a look at articles where the project is done or there's no further purpose left in that article, and we're finding unproductive amounts that are just lying around, that clutter up our books. They're unproductive. They can be used for other purposes. And so we're asking that those small amounts be returned to the bucket from which they came. So if it's a free cash article, it goes back to free cash. Capital stabilization goes back to capital stabilization. So we're cleaning those up so that there's more funds available for our future projects without having to go the tax rate to fund them. And then the final thing that we're doing is that we have borrowing authorizations. Again, the project is done. The equipment has been bought. The project has been completed, and there's remaining borrowing authorization on the books. We have to report that to the Department of Revenue on an annual basis, SEC. And so we're just asking that town meeting reauthorize the borrowing at the right amount so we don't have to carry these balances. It frees up about $50,000 worth of borrowing capacity for future productive use. So it's all a housekeeping. If you have any... Oh, and then during the public hearing that we held last week, the Historic Commission asked that we withhold action on the $1,800 for historical record cleaning, and we consented. We said that, okay, if you're going to use the money, go ahead and use it. So that's the purpose of the amendment to this particular article.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. All in favor of Article 5, signify with your green card. All opposed. It passes unanimously, 118 to 0. Moving on to Article 6. Article 6 is the budget. And once I read this motion and it's been moved and seconded, the hard-working people of Finance Committee will read you those line items. The motion for Article 6 reads, "Move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $15,332,254 and appropriate from sewer receipts $1,158,132; appropriate from water receipts $1,298,244; transfer from sewer reserves $10,000; transfer from water reserves $10,000; take from MSBA Debt Fund Reserve $2,444; and to appropriate from the Hadley Public Access Cable Finance franchise receipts $88,336; and to transfer from the November 2014 premium balance of $928 for the maintenance and operation of the town in the fiscal year 2018 as recommended by the Finance Committee, including debt and interest; and to fix the salaries of all elected officials, including, if appropriate, Select Board, Town Clerk, Town Collector, Town Treasurer, Town Assessors, Town Constables, Board of Health, Electoral under the Oliver Smith Will, Planning Board, and the Park and Rec Commission; and to provide a reserve fund." Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion's been moved and seconded. At this time, I will call on the Finance Committee. Mr. Tom Pitta.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So we'll just go through and read these line by line. So the Department 114, Town Moderator, expense account $100 for a total of $100. Department 122, Select Board, salary for the Chair $1,400. For members, $1,200 each for $4,800. Other salaries, $50,283. Expenses, $15,583 for a total of $72,0066. Budget 129, Town Administrator, salary $91,940. Expenses $2,400 for a total of $94,340. Finance Committee, Budget 131, Salary Chair $200. Members $150 each for $600. Expenses $250 for a total of $1,050. Reserve Fund, 132. Reserve Fund $50,000 for a total of $50,000. Account 135, Town Accountant, Salaries $10,592. Salary and expenses $82,182 for a total of $92,774. 141, Assessors, Salary for the Chair $2,678. Members $2,142 each for a total of $4,284. Other salaries $65,324. Expenses $21,922 for a total of $94,208. Budget 145, Treasurer, Treasurer Salary $59,167. Other salaries $45,393. Expenses $32,805 for a total of $137,365. 146, Tax Collector, Collector Salary $60,062. Other salaries $38,220. Expenses $13,967 for a total of $112,249. 151, Town Council, Legal Expenses $41,380 for a total of $41,380. 161, Town Clerk, Clerk Salary $58,41. Other salaries $15,300. Expenses $5,150 for a total of $78,194. 163, Board of Registars, Salary $7,420. Expenses $6,500 for a total of $13,920. 171, Conservation Commission, Expenses $3,110 for a total of $3,110. 175, Planning Board, Salary Chair $600. Salary Clerk $500. Members $400 each for a total of $1,200. Expenses $10,480 for a total of $12,780. 176, Board of Appeals, Salary $1,135. Expenses $900 for a total of $2,035. Long Range Planning, $182 is no longer in effect, so that's zero. 193, Insurance, Property Insurance, $103,400 for a total of $103,400. Town Buildings, Senior Center, $36,250. Town Hall, $64,125. North Hadley Hall, zero. Russell School, $1,400 for a total of $101,775. Police Department, Salary $1,263. Expenses $187,593 for a total of $1,187,856. Fire Department, Salaries $291,249. Expenses $141,025 for a total of $432,274. Communication Center, Salaries $246,245. Expenses $53,100 for a total of $299,345. Ambulance, Expenses $140,000 for a total of $140,000. Building Inspector, Salaries $89,304. Expenses $4,290 for a total of $93,594. Gas Inspector, Salary $3,391. Expenses $1,100 for a total of $4,491. Plumbing Inspector, Salary $5,913. Expenses $755 for a total of $6,668. School Department, Salary and expenses $6,934,167 for a total of $6,934,167. Highway Construction and Maintenance, Salaries $460,530. Expenses $313,484 for a total of $774,014. Snow and Ice, Salaries $70,973. Expenses $111,250 for a total of $182,223. Street Lighting, Expenses $20,840 for a total of $20,840. Highway Building and Maintenance, Expenses $122,100 for a total of $122,100. Cemetery, Salaries $5,505. Expenses $12,830 for a total of $18,335. Board of Health, Salary Chair $1,850. Salary Clerk $1,650. Members $1,450. Other salaries $11,100. Expenses $20,485 for a total of $36,535. Council on Aging, Salaries $84,77. Expenses $4,960 for a total of $89,37. Veteran Services, Expenses $110,122 for a total of $110,122. Oliver Smith will elector stipend $100 for a total of $100. Public Library, Salaries $132,690. Expenses $65,625 for a total of $198,315. Park Commission, Salary Chair $420. Members $315 each for $630. Other salaries $60,873. Expenses $4,365 for a total of $66,288. Historical Commission, Expenses $1,250 for a total of $1,250. Long Term Debt, Principal $1,121,380. Interest $143,695 for a total of $1,265,075. Benefits, Retirement $1,057,117. Workers' Comp $72,000. Unemployment $40,000. Health Insurance $1,281,000. Life Insurance $2,800. Medicare Town Share $133,000. OPEB $207,403. No Contribution to Stabilization, Accident Insurance $45,000 for a total of $2,838,320. Cable TV Public Access, Salaries $55,000. Reserve Fund $20,000. Expenses $7,254 for a total of $82,254. Waste Water Division, Salaries $309,46. Reserve Fund $10,000. Long Term Debt and Principal and Interest $135,351. Other Expenses $473,250 for a total of $927,647. Water Division, Salaries $345,686. Reserve Fund $10,000. Long Term Debt, Principal and Interest $197,856. Other Expenses $505,200 for a total of $1,058,742. And that is a total budget of $17,900... Excuse me, $17,903,38. Mr. Moderator, I move these line items.
Line items have been moved and seconded. This was voted by the Finance Committee 4-0-1. There was one abstention, and it was four to one recommended from the Select Board. So if there's any questions, please come forward. Hearing none, all in favor of Article Six, the town budget, signify with your green card. One. 117 to one, Article Six passes. Moving on to Article Eight, which is a capital article. This was recommended by the Capital Planning Committee 5-0, Finance Committee 4-0, and the Select Board 5-0. Motion reads, "Move that the town transfer $26,000 to be re-appropriated from available funds from Article 10 of the May 2012 town meeting to rehabilitate and pave the town hall parking lot, and to appropriate $69,915 from the available Hadley Public Access television funds for capital purchases for equipments and facilities for Hadley Media." I have a motion? In a second. Selectman Devine will speak to this.
The first project is a new parking lot service for the town hall. The property is held jointly between the First Church and the town. Funding for this is going to be paid half by the First Church, $26,000, and half by the town to accomplish that goal. The second part of this article raises money for capital upgrades to Hadley Media. Capital expenses include upgrades in new equipment and upgrades to the facility. The funds for Hadley Media come from the Capital Fund, gift provided by Charter Communications. There's no impact on your taxes for this article. We ask you to support it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Devine. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Eight, signify with your green card. Opposed? Article Eight passes unanimously, 114 to zero. Moving on to Article Nine. Article Nine, Motion reads, "Move that the town rescind the vote taken on April 16th of the town meeting of October 27th, 2005, which created a nine-member Long Range Planning Implementation Committee and further dissolved the Long Range Plan Implementation Committee. This article is recommended 5-0 by the Select Board. It will take a simple majority. Do I have a motion? Do I have it second? Article's been moved and seconded. Mr. Devine.
The Long Range Implementation Committee has been inactive since 2014 and should be dissolved. It was originally created by town meeting vote to assist the planning board in implementing the recommendations from the 2005 master plan, and the committee was able to offer a number of zoning articles consistent with the intent of that master plan. The planning board is currently updating the new master plan, of which a draft is out. It's expected to be completed by the summer. The planning board is legally responsible for the writing and implementation of this plan. Mass. General Law's Chapter 41, Section 81D. Since the Long Range Plan was formed, Planning Committee was formed by town meeting vote and needs to be dissolved by town meeting vote."
Is this on?
Yeah.
Shel Horowitz, 16 Barstow Lane. I was a member of this committee for, I think, nine years, and I think we did have a rather remarkable track record in terms of all but one thing that we brought forth, and we brought that forth three times, and it was defeated three times. But everything else we ever brought forth became a part of this town's bylaws, and a lot of work went into each one of those things, many, many hours of meetings. I do understand that the committee is currently inactive, and I do understand that there'll be obviously some changes with the new master plan, but I'm wondering if there's a way to kind of put it on hold rather than dissolve it and then reconstitute it when there's some fresh blood, because it played a really vital role in this town for a long time. Thank you, Mr. Horowitz.
Bill Dewire from the Planning Board. We certainly acknowledge the efforts that the Long Range Plan Implementation Committee put in. The point is not the effort, the point is the authority. It should never have been authorized by town meeting. By statute, a planning board shall make a master plan. The planning board may decide to create an implementation committee of its own, but the master plan is the obligation of the planning board and not the obligation of town meeting. It was the first master plan we had ever done. Perhaps we... The consultant should have known better, but it was never town meeting's place to create an implementation committee. Only the planning board can implement the master plan.
Hello? Andy Morris Ruben, 45 Roosevelt Street. I just think that with the state of the country and the world, I don't even see the point of planning for the future. So I support dissolving the committee.
Any other questions? Comments relevant to the article? Hearing none, everyone please signify with your green card if you support Article Nine. Opposed? One, two, one, two, three, abstention. Okay, so we got one eleven to two with one abstention. Article 10, we are passing over. So we're going to move to Article 11. Article 11 is recommended four to zero by the Finance Committee. It's recommended five to zero by the Select Board. It requires a simple majority, and the motion reads as follows. Move that the town accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5K, establishing a senior tax work-off program for fiscal year 2018. Selectman Devine. Moved and seconded.
Hadley senior population is highly educated and possesses a wide range of skills that would enhance the operational performance of many of our town departments. This article... This article provides property tax relief for Hadley seniors that provide the town with reliable, talented, dedicated volunteers to perform work as and add value to the community. The end result will be the town will balance its increasing needs for public service while controlling costs. Susan Travasano, our senior citizens, geez, I can't, Department Head, is the one that brought this forward to us, and we thank her for doing it. It's an opportunity, we think, for some of the seniors and an opportunity for the town.
It's actually Suzanne. Suzanne Travasano, Senior Services Director here in Hadley, and I live at three eighty-six Main Road in Gill. So this is probably something that you've heard about in other surrounding communities. It's actually growing in popularity throughout the Commonwealth. And in fact, the head of Elder Affairs says it has grown twenty-two percent over the last four years. Communities are adopting this as a way of trying to keep seniors that are on a fixed income in their own homes when they're on the threshold of not being able to meet all of the needs monetarily. It's a modest abatement, and they do have to meet income guidelines to apply for the program. Department Heads would submit job descriptions that they need help with, such as data entry in the Treasurer's Office, a receptionist at the new senior center, meal site volunteers, data entry at DPW, multiple needs that we have throughout the town at differing times of the year. And so it's kind of a win-win situation. We're not envisioning this as being anything that is going to be huge to start off with. Typically takes a few years for people to get adjusted to the system and apply for it. But a moderate start would be a good way to acknowledge some of the elder homeowners that might just be on the cusp of deciding between refilling a prescription and buying fuel. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. And Suzanne is always available if you have any questions regarding senior activities. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with your green card. It passes one thirteen to one. Moving on to Article Twelve. Article Twelve was recommended by the Finance Committee, five, zero. Recommended by the Select Board, five, zero. It takes a simple majority, and the motion reads as follows. Move that the town authorize and approve an agreement for payment in lieu of taxes, otherwise known as a pilot program pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Thirty-Eight HB, and any other enabling legislation between the Town and Next Amp Inc. or its successors and assigns for solar facilities to be owned, installed, and operated by Next Amp Inc. or its successors and assigns in the town of Hadley, and authorize the Select Board to take such action as may be necessary to carry out the vote taken hereunder. It's been moved, do I have a second? Moved and seconded, Selectwoman Chunglo.
The town is negotiating a payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreement with a solar field installer who is associated with Next Amp and Company. The approximately three megawatt solar field will be built near Hampshire Mall. As part of the financing of this project, the developer for Next Amp has approached the town of Hadley for this pilot agreement. In the past, the town has offered a base payment per megawatt, base payment based on market conditions with a two percent annual escalator increase. Over twenty years, this should bring in more money than straightforward taxation. The benefit of the developer is that they will have a predictable cash outlay plan. And this is a six, such solar pilot agreement that we will have implemented.
Thank you, Joyce. Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, all that support this article, please signify with your green card. Opposed? One, two, so one eleven, three, one ten to three. Article passes. Moving on to Article Thirteen. Once again, recommended five, zero by the Finance Committee, five, zero by the Select Board. It's, will require a simple majority, and the motion reads, move that the town authorize and approve an agreement in payment in lieu of taxes, otherwise known as a pilot pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Thirty-Eight HB, and any other enabling legislation between the Town and Next Amp Inc. or its successors or assigns for solar facility to be owned, installed, and operated by Next Amp Inc. or its successors or assigns in the town of Hadley, and to authorize the Select Board to take any such action as may be necessary to carry out the vote taken hereunder. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Article's been moved and seconded. Once again, Selectwoman Chunglo.
Basically, this is the same, it's the same company, Next Amp. And again, it is a two-megawatt solar field that will be built off of South Maple Street. Same financing available to us, two percent annual escalator increase again, and this should bring in money over the next twenty years. So it's the same, same type of deal with the same company on a different piece of property.
Thomas McGee, forty-three Old Mountain Road. I, I understand the pilot payment. Is the mic on?
Yeah, now, there we go.
Can you hear me now? I want my neighbor to hear me. I understand pilot, payment in lieu of taxes, and that's the way the town gets more money. My concern is that on this article, it makes reference to the intersection of South Maple Street and Moody Bridge Road. Says in the article.
Located off of South Maple Street, as shown in Assessor's Map, ten D, parcel one.
That's the intersection of South Maple Street and Moody Bridge Road.
Yeah. It does. Go ahead. It's what it says. He's right. You're right. Go ahead.
The assessor's office shows that, go ahead.
I'm, just to, just to clarify, that the printed warrant does say that, that it's in this particular intersection, but it does provide the correct assessor's map and lot number to identify that it's going to be in the, near the Hampshire Mall.
No, no, there's two.
There are two of them. They're, they're going to be close to the Hampshire Mall.
Both of them, right.
Why does it state then, South Maple Street and Moody Bridge Road? And I'm seeing little tags on that property.
When we first put together the warrant, we approached Eversource with the idea that they would be asking us for pilot agreement, and so that's the reason why the warrant is a little confused on this point, because Eversource, which owns, which proposes to own the property and the development at the intersection of Moody Bridge Road and South Maple Street, they declined to enter into a pilot agreement. So unfortunately, it was a typo that we didn't catch when we were amending the article.
Well, it's an important typo, because, because that land on South Maple Street and Moody Bridge Road is on the most scenic road in town. And that is agricultural land owned by Western Mass Selector and its successors. It's over seven hundred thousand dollars in value, and I understand the pilot only relates to the tax on the solar panels that they would put up. That is the wrong place and the wrong location when we come here tonight to vote thirty thousand dollars for acquiring property and protection of scenic areas. So if this is not South Maple Street and Moody Bridge Road, I would hope that the citizens of Hadley would look at the editorial in the Hampshire Gazette today on public utilities, and I would hope that we all would find out if anything is planned for South Maple Street and Moody Bridge Road. Thank you.
So just, just to be clear.
This was, it was posted at the proper locations, and it is, is prop, it is properly posted to begin with. This, this is wrong here, yes, for Town.
This is wrong here for Town Meeting, but what was properly posted at the post office, Town Hall, and online was correct on, on the other warrant. So this, this here, yes, was wrong with the wording here tonight for this Article Thirteen, but it was actually posted correctly in the proper places before Town Meeting tonight.
I, I appreciate that, but the, I attended the annual Town Meeting, warrant review, and at that time, it was South Maple Street and Moody Bridge Road. And I am concerned that there would be a change in prime agricultural land for the building of solar panels at that location. And that's the way it reads.
But it's not what was posted. This is, this is the authority that.
Hold on, hold on, Joyce. Let David speak to it.
Come on, David.
So first of all, let me give you the, this assurance, that the vote that you're taking tonight is not about the intersection of Moody Bridge Road and South Maple Street. That is not being negotiated by the Selectman, and it is not before you, for Town Meeting vote. Just to review the pilot process, in order for a solar developer to receive a payment in lieu of taxes, they have to go through three levels of, of approval. They have to come to the Select Board first for their approval, then they have to go to Town Meeting, and then they have to go to the Department of Revenue. The property that you're concerned about, and I understand your, your concern, the property that you're concerned about, there's no Select Board vote having to do with a pilot agreement for that particular parcel. So that is not before you. It may be that what we need is some sort of floor motion to be explicit that this particular parcel is explicitly excluded from the vote that's, the article that's in front of you right now.
And I would hope that the Planning Commission and whoever wants to change the zoning in Hadley will not change prime agricultural land in this town for the erection of solar panels to block the view of everyone leaving from the mall and heading over to Atkins Farm. Thank you.
Tim, go ahead.
I'm, I'm Tim Nyheart, I'm the Building Inspector in Town. I can assure you that the map and parcel number that's shown is not that intersection. It is a parcel, it's sort of landlocked, that's in back of the Hampshire Mall, sort of over near where U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is. So it did go in front of the ZBA for approval, and that is the parcel. But it is sad that it was stated this way, it really was. Because that is exactly like Tom said, that's prime agricultural, and it was very concerning by most people in Town that that wasn't going to be developed. But this is not that intersection.
Yes, and Mr. Joel Bard, our Town Council has, would like to make a recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, Joel Bard, Town Council. So addressing the gentleman's concern, the motion that was made could be amended, and I'll read the language in a minute, could be amended to identify the specific parcel that is intended, and as your Building Inspector just informed you, the, the parcel that I'm going to read the description of is not the one by Moody Bridge Road, but in fact is closer to the mall. So the motion that was read refers to a pilot agreement between, and I'm reading, between the Town and Next Amp Inc. or its successors or assigns for solar facilities to be owned, installed, and operated by Next Amp Inc. or its successors and assigns. And then I recommend that the following phrase be added, "on land located off South Maple Street and as shown on Assessor's Map, ten D," as in David, "parcel one." And then the motion would continue, "in the town of Hadley," and so forth. So someone?
Motion, motions been amended and seconded. Any questions?
Not relative to the amendment.
Okay.
But I have something I would like to say.
Go ahead.
Okay. Randy Isner, two Autumn View Drive. Although there's no pilot in, being voted on, on that South Maple, Moody Bridge parcel, if I'm not mistaken, there is a plan before the Planning Board to put solar on that, and the Planning Board could correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't want you people standing up here to look bad when that comes before.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what we'll do. We'll deal with that when it comes down the road. Thank you, Mr. Isner. So I have an amended motion that's been moved and seconded. Would you like me to reread it for everybody? Okay, so the amended motion reads, for Article Thirteen, move that the town authorize and approve an agreement for payment in lieu of taxes pursuant to provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Thirty-Eight HB, and any other enabling legislation between the Town and Next Amp Inc. or its successors or assigns for a solar facility to be owned, installed, and operated by Next Amp Inc. or its successors or assigns, located off of South Maple Street, as shown on Assessor's Map, ten D, as in David, parcel one, within the town of Hadley, and to authorize the Select Board to take any such action as may be necessary to carry out the vote taken hereunder. Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify with your green card. Anybody opposed to the amendment? It passes one thirteen to zero. Now we got to vote the article. As amended, do I need to reread the motion? Okay. Question, concern, comment?
Michelle Morris Friedman, forty-five Roosevelt Street. I will vote on the amendment, but what I'd like to point out, I've requested many times that we have some kind of audio visual at Town Meeting to write down amendments so people can track them. It would be good to have an easel board with parcels marked on them so people could refer to them, because people don't always have time to go back and forth to the Town Hall. And I think this is a good example of that confusion, because I'm still not sure where this parcel is. All I know, it is near the Hampshire Mall, but I don't know exactly where.
I, I can tell you exactly where it is. If you go around the back of the Hampshire Mall, there's a large cornfield that Mr. Goulet owns, and this is where both of these two parcels are located. Is that correct, Bill?
Uh, yes, Bill Dewire from the Planning Board. You'll remember the site very well. It was going to be a Super Walmart.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, oh?
Shell Horowitz, sixteen Barstow Lane. I thoroughly support what Michelle Morris Friedman just said, that we need to have, we, I mean, it's easy enough with a laptop and a projection screen that we can see what we're voting on. This is something that comes up over and over again, and I don't quite understand why we haven't done it yet.
Duly noted. I'll pass that on to the Select Board for the next Town Meeting. Now can we vote on Article Thirteen? All in favor, signify with your green card. Anybody opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Any abstentions? One. So that article passes. One oh two. So that article passes 102 to 8 to 1. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on. Article 14. It's recommended by the Finance Committee 4-0, recommended by the Select Board 4-1. The motion reads, "move that the town adopt the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 64N, Section 3, as amended by question 4 of the election of 2016, or any other enabling authority to impose a local sales tax or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products at the rate of 2% of the total sales price." Do I have a motion? Article's been moved and seconded. This is a simple majority, and Town Administrator David Nixon will address this question.
So this is one of two articles relating to recreational marijuana that's on the warrant tonight. The second article is a proposal to have a moratorium on such sales until we have a chance to, for the State House to catch up on the regulations. This particular article implements the 2% sales tax that is allowed under the law. So last November, we had a number, we had an election, we had a number of surprises in that election. Eighty percent of Hadley voters turned out for that election. Over 54% supported the recreational marijuana bylaw, or law. So now we're in a situation where we're going to start implementing the will of the voters. The law allows us to assess the sales by, for 2% sales tax that would come into the general fund, and we don't know what that is, but we understand that, we anticipate that there are going to be costs to the town for the issues associated with the recreational marijuana. So for police, public safety, ambulance, fire, et cetera, we'd like to implement this the sales tax in order to offset some of those anticipated costs.
Mr. Moderator Edwin Matusko on 16 Stockbridge Street. So this 2% sales tax would be in addition to the 6.25% Mass. State tax that we pay?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Hi, David Ryan in 10 Isabel Court. I'm just, I'm totally in support of more taxes for the town, especially on what I consider like a luxury item. I just want to know, like, what is the added expected cost to the police department for decriminalizing something that they had been enforcing as a law?
That's a good question. I don't have those numbers here. I don't think anybody does. New territory for the police department and everybody here.
That's very true.
Thank you.
I'm Randall Brother. I live in Mount Warner. I think one of the worst things they did in town is when they passed that bill for people to get drugs. And I heard on the news, some people have been caught taking these drugs and driving on the road, and they went driving safely. They caused a few accidents. I think the thing is, if they're going to have drugs, they should have them where they're not going to cause harm to people, where they're going to not only injure themselves, but other people along with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Mr. Donald Pibchinsky.
This is just a point of interest. When we, as a state, passed recreational marijuana, that allows us to open up the contract again to renegotiate, which we'll be doing in the future. So it could increase from 2% to a higher figure in the future also, when we renegotiate.
Deana Friedman, 16 Barstow Lane. I just had a question about whether there's any extra taxes on alcohol sales, and if those go to the town for police, police involvement in DUI and other kinds of issues related to alcohol at this point.
Not at the town level. There's a meals tax, but there's not one on alcohol. Is that correct? That's what I thought. Any other questions, concerns? All in favor of Article 14, please signify with your green card. All opposed. Terry, is that up in the air? It passes 112 to 2. Thank you. Moving on to Article 16. Article 16 was recommended by the Community Preservation Act Committee 6 to 2. Article 16 was recommended against by the Select Board 4 to 1. It was also recommended against by the Finance Committee 2 to 1 with one abstention. The motion for Article 16 reads, "move that the town transfer $10,000 from the Community Preservation Act Historical Set-Aside Fund for historical purposes to restore and rehabilitate the property known as the Hampshire County Courthouse, 99 Main Street, North Hampton, Mass., and its expenditures to conduct within two years the date of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting, and further on the condition that the Hampshire Council of Governments receives funding from the Commonwealth for this project." Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Motion's been moved and seconded. This was brought forth by the CPA Committee, so I would like them to speak to it. It requires a simple majority. Edwin Matusko.
Edwin Matusko, currently Chair of the CPA Committee. We received a request beginning of November from the Hampshire County Council on Government concerning this project, and the committee felt that it was up to this August body to decide whether or not to expend the money or not. Some people didn't think it was a good expenditure of the town's, of your hard taxpayers' money, and so we decided to let you people decide. Thank you.
Ginger Goldsberry, 245 River Drive. I'm also a member of the Historical Commission. And my question is, why would we, who are so reluctant to spend preservation, historic preservation money on our own buildings, want to help our neighbors in the next town? Now, I understand, being a good neighbor, I understand that, and that's good, that's nice, but is there another reason we would want to donate to the historic, to the courthouse when we're not taking care of our own buildings? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Devine. Selectman Devine, excuse me.
I think by the vote of the Select Board, you see a lot of the same sentiments, and I was going to ask for a point of order too, because I don't think that the CPA actually supports this article. I think they qualified it, and it was brought before us today before, because it qualifies. And it's their job, and we thank you for doing it. No deference, I have the same feelings that Ginger has, that we have a lot of needs in the community in the town of Hadley. We ask for your support for CPA so that we could spend the money in the town of Hadley. We have needs in buildings, we have ball fields that need to be done. We got about $2 million in that account right now, then we got more than $2 million worth in needs. So I'm asking to vote against it, not because the courthouse doesn't need to be done. Also, if you saw in the paper a couple weeks ago, the courthouses are currently under review as to what's going to be spent for state money on the courthouses as well. So it's not that our courthouse doesn't need to be taken care of, we understand that. It's just we think that the taxpayers' money for CPA should probably be taken care of the needs of the community. Thank you.
You're probably wondering why we passed over Article 10 to withdraw from the COG. The reasoning why there, we did that was because we had to open and close the warrant late, and we didn't know about the regulations in their charter, that you had to notify the COG 45 days before entering into a vote to withdraw. I would like to thank Mr. Sarzinski also for his last 11 years of service. He would be here today, but he's in Italy with his wife as we speak. When it comes to this situation, CPA funds, there's only nine out of 20 towns that belong to the COG that have CPA funds. Presently, there's only 15 towns that belong to the Hampshire Council of Government. Towns like North Hampton, Amherst, East Hampton, Worthington are out. They're not even in. Ware also. So the point, I guess, what I'm trying to get to is, the courts allow Hampshire Council of Government $125,000 a year, plus utilities of heat, electricity, and custodian services to maintain that building. That's been for the last 15 years. They haven't put any of that money away for restoration of this building. They have a budget of $600,000. They have no revenues to support that anymore. Their salaries are more than all the departments that are providing services. So I guess, I don't support this either, and I've taken over for Mike the last three months, and I'm as frustrated as he is with what's going on at the COG. And I think we'll be bringing this back in the fall for a vote, once we have more information and we adhere to the deadlines. So again, as with Mr. Devine, I don't support this. In our bylaw, when we voted this, it said there that the money was supposed to be expended only in the town of Hadley.
Thank you, Selectman Pibchinsky. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none. All in favor of Article 16, signify with your green card.
I guess we'll just fund before town's...
Okay. All opposed. Article 16 fails. 108 to 4. Moving on to Article 17. Article 17, once again, was recommended by the CPA Committee 6 to 2, is recommended by the Select Board 4 to 1, and is recommended by the Finance Committee 2, 4, 1 against, 1 abstention. Motion reads, "move that the town transfer $500 from the Community Preservation Act Historical Set-Aside Fund for historical preservation purposes to fund a study to restore and rehabilitate the property known as Smith's Charities, 51 Main Street, North Hampton, Mass., 01060. Said expenditure is to be conducted within two years of the date of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting." Do I have a motion?
No.
Do I have a second? Article's been moved and seconded. Once again, this is a CPA article, and it requires a simple majority.
Edwin Matusko, Chair of the CPA Committee. Again, this was the same reason. The committee felt it was more important that you people decide how to spend your own hard-earned money. That's why this is placed here at the Annual Town Meeting.
Randy Isner, 2 Autumn View Drive. I am a member of the CPA Committee, but I have been asked, as a private citizen, to read a letter from the President of Smith Charities. If that's appropriate, I will do that.
Is anyone opposed?
The letter is addressed to the inhabitants of the town of Hadley, RE $500 CPC grant to the trustees of the Smith Charities building study. Dear neighbors, many of you are familiar with Smith Charities. For those of you that are not, the trustees of the Smith Charities are charged with managing funds established under the will and trust of Oliver Smith of Hatfield in 1848. They distribute the income earned from lending those funds in the form of secured mortgage loans. Distributions are made to qualified beneficiaries from Hadley and eight other surrounding communities. The beneficiaries include widows with young children, young men and women going into a trade, nurses, and first-time brides. I'm sure many of you here tonight have either received a gift from Smith Charities, or may have obtained a mortgage loan from Smith Charities. Smith Charities is seeking assistance to obtain a comprehensive study of the condition of the historic building it owns located at 51 Main Street in North Hampton. The study is estimated to cost approximately $29,000. It has been 20 years since we have been able to do any major work on the building. We have already obtained $10,000 from the city of North Hampton and $2,000 pending town meeting approval from Hatfield CPC. We are also awaiting approval of a matching grant from the Massachusetts Historical Commission in the amount of $14,500. As we all know, the interest rates over the last 15 years have been very, very low, leaving Smith Charities with less and less money to use for both the gifts to beneficiaries and for work on the historic building that we have occupied since its completion around 1865. In just the past 10 years, qualified Hadley beneficiaries have received $30,266. That's just the last 10 years. Smith Charities has been giving gifts to qualified beneficiaries in Hadley under the will and trust of Oliver Smith for over 150 years. In addition, Smith Charities supports Smith Vocational High School in North Hampton, a school which many Hadley children attend and which produces highly skilled tradespersons, many of whom remain in the area. We are seeking just a small amount of $500 to support this study, which is a critical first step in the preservation of this historic building. It will give us a prioritized list of the building's most urgent needs so that we can use our limited funds most efficiently. My sincere thank you for your consideration. Lydia Zisch, President.
Thank you, Randy.
Shell Horowitz, 16 Barstow Lane. I'm just curious what the relationship is of the town of Hadley to Smith Charities other than that Hadley residents are among the beneficiaries.
Selectman Devine.
That is it, Shell. We are recipients of it. And I wanted to stand up here as the person who spoke against the last article and explain to you why I think we're voting in favor of this one. This is a private organization. This is not a government entity that's there. For the last 100 years, Smith Charities has been offering money to the town of Hadley, and we have taken it. It was clearly stated to Ms. Zisch that this is the end of the line with the $500. It was a minimal amount of money, and we think for the amount of benefit that we have received from Smith Charities, it was appropriate for us to say to them that we support them. We wish them well in their project. I know the interest rates are low. If John Devine was here amongst us as the President of Smith Charities for 25 years, I know he'd be advocating for this, and he'd be a much better advocate to tell you just exactly how much the community has benefited from Smith Charities. But I think it suffices to say from Mr. Isner's reading of it, just in the last 10 years, it's in excess of $30,000. So I'd ask you to support this one here. It's $500. I don't think that's a big amount of money, and we did relay from the Select Board at the meeting that we weren't going to be going, that we wouldn't be supporting it in the future if they were looking for additional CPA money. Thank you.
Mr. Pibchinsky.
An important segment of this is, there's 20 communities in Hampshire County. Only seven are eligible to draw from Smith Charities. Only seven are eligible to draw from Smith Charities, Hadley being one of those seven.
Thank you, Selectman Pichinsky. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 17, please signify with your green card. Anyone opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Abstentions, any abstentions? Article 17 passes 100 to 10. Article 18 is up next, and I am going to step aside and turn over my gavel to Selectman Devine for these next two articles. For anybody that may not know, this happens to affect my family, so I'm going to step aside and let Mr. Devine handle this.
Thank you, Mr. West. There's just a little bit of housekeeping you need to take care of first. We heard that you get paid $100 a year. There's two meetings, and I'm taking care of 10% of this meeting. You owe me five bucks. Thanks, ladies and gentlemen. Motion, Article number 18, move that the town authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain on such terms and conditions as the board deems appropriate, an agricultural preservation restriction on all or a portion of the two parcels of lands containing a total of approximately 107 acres located off South Maple Street, as shown on assessor's map, number nine, parcel 56 and 56A, and further, to transfer $25,000 for the Community Preservation Act General Fund for the foregoing acquisition and costs related thereto, and authorize the Select Board to apply for, accept, and expend any funds which may be provided by the Commonwealth or any other sources to defray all or a portion of the cost for acquiring said parcels, and enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments that may be necessary or convenient to effectuate the foregoing purposes, said expenditures, to be conducted within two years of the date of 2017 Annual Town Meeting. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Is there a second?
No.
Been motioned and seconded. We'd ask the CPA Committee if they could speak to this article. We'd appreciate it. Mr. Edwin Matusko.
I don't remember when this was exactly presented to the CPA Committee, but all this is, is the town's contribution to the state buying the development rights to a parcel of land. Okay. Okay, I, okay, I stand corrected. This is half of the town's portion of what the town will be responsible for paying to this West family for an APR. The other half is coming from the TDR, Transfer Development Right Funds.
That is correct. They're two different funds.
They're two different funds. This one is coming from the CPA General Fund to fund an APR for the West family.
Further discussion regarding Article number 18? Sir? Selectman Pichinsky.
I was a Selectman 35 years ago, when this program started with Michael Pawatka. Today, we really got to be proud. We have approximately 5,200 acres in the town of Hadley. We're encroaching right now 3,000 acres that will be preserved forever in the town of Hadley. We're number one in the Commonwealth, and Hadley is very proud of it.
Thank you, Mr. Pipschinsky.
43 Old Mountain Road. I rise in support of this article because this will preserve more land along South Maple Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Other comments? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor of support, please signify by raising your green card. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Article 19 is going to be skipped over, just because the funding mechanism has already been put in place and is no longer needed for town meeting floor. Article number 20 is the second half, excuse me, of the funding mechanism for the West property. Motion, move that the town transfer $25,000 from the Transfer Development Rights Fund for the acquisition of the agricultural preservation restriction on all or a portion of the two parcels of land containing a total of approximately 107 acres located off South Maple Street, as described in Article number 18, and costs related thereto, and authorize the Select Board to apply for, accept, expend any funds which may be provided for the Commonwealth and any other sources to defray all or a portion of the cost of acquiring said parcels, and enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary or convenient to effectuate the foregoing purposes. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Is there a second?
No.
Been motioned and seconded. Again, this is the second half of the funding mechanism for this. Any further discussion regarding this article? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your green cards. All those opposed? Brian, that was two unanimous votes in favor of the West farm. I'd like to turn the gavel back over to Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Devine. Thank you, taxpayers of Hadley. Moving along, we are going to go, we're going to skip over Article 21, because once again, the funding mechanism has come through, so we don't need to take up that article at this time. We're going to move directly to Article 22, and this was brought forward by the Planning Board, and it is a zoning article. It requires a two-thirds majority. The motion is going to read, move that the town amend the zoning bylaws of the code of the town of Hadley as delineated in Article 22 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant for May 4, 2017, incorporated by references herein. And you can see there's some language change there. Do I have a motion? Been moved and seconded. Jim Maximowski, Chairman of Planning Board.
The Planning Board recommends acceptance of this article unanimously. Basically, to explain what this is, Section 6.1.1 is an enforcement of the general administration of special permits and such by the zoning enforcement officer, thereby the building inspector. Right now, he has, just, I'll just read the section that this affects to, so you'll know what exactly it means. And under a special permit issued, the zoning enforcement officer has authority that commence, basically, construction must commence within a period of six months from the date of issuance of the second of the special permit. This now gives them 12 months for the applicant to commence construction. So, it extends the time period by six months. These were amendments to the Zoning Act that were changed by the legislature into last year, and it's recommended that different towns in the state adopt these changes. The section, the second part, 62.1, is, again, a special, a special permit shall lapse two years from the date of grant thereof of a special permit, the date of the decision filed with the town clerk. That now becomes three years, so it extends it by one year, and it's really all that this does.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody have any questions or concerns in regards to Article 22? Hearing none. All in favor, signify with your green card. One. Abstentions? One. So, that passes 112 to one, one abstention. Moving on to, it passes the two-thirds majority. Article 23, once again, it is brought forth by the Planning Board. It's a fairly long article, so I'll give everybody a few minutes to read it, and then I'll read the motion. The motion for Article 3 reads, move that the town amend the zoning bylaws of the code of the town of Hadley as delineated in Article 23 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant for May 4, 2017, and incorporated by references herein. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Motion's been moved and seconded. Jim Maximowski, Chairman of the Planning Board, will speak to this article.
The Planning Board recommends acceptance of this article unanimously, and there's been a lot written in the newspapers lately, so I won't get into why the moratorium was really in there, but the state still hasn't decided how to, they're talking of changing the regulations, looking at the regulations, whatever it may be. This article gives a moratorium on recreational marijuana only until November 30, 2018, and it would expire on that date. And we already have the regulations in place for medical marijuana. In fact, we have approved the medical marijuana facility. This only affects the recreational one.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions, concerns? All in favor of Article, oh, you want to speak?
No.
You sure? Okay. All in favor of Article 23, signify with your green card. Opposed to Article 3? One, two. Abstentions? One. So, Article 23 passes 109 to three with one abstention. It passes the two-thirds majority. Onto Article 24, which is another, and final zoning bylaw change, or article. Motion for Article 24 reads, move that the town amend the zoning bylaws of the code of the code of the town of Hadley as delineated in Article 24 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant, May 4, 2017, and incorporated by references herein. Do I have a motion?
No.
We have, our motion's been moved and seconded. Once again, Jim Maximowski, Chairman of the Planning Board.
Planning Board recommends this article unanimously, five to zero. When we were going through the zoning bylaw to look for sections regarding the special permits that we voted on, two articles ago on changing timing, we found that in this particular section of the bylaw, and it relates to adult entertainment. Adult entertainment was a bylaw amendment that was put in by petition in 2004, so, you know, 13 years ago plus, and we've never had to apply this bylaw yet, which of one reason, we never found it. But anyways, this one section reads, a special permit hearing shall be held within 21 days from the date of acceptance by the town clerk of the application and a decision rendered within 21 days as of the close of the hearing. The general rules for a special permit are 60 days from the date of application and 60 days from the date of close. 21 days for a date of conducting a public hearing is a timeframe that is not impossible to meet, but it puts an awful burden on a special permit granting authority, and it basically hurries up the decision and the application and the whole process, and state law already has 60 days for such, so that's all we're trying to do is just delete that section and comply with the basic state law of 60 days, which is automatic anyway.
Thank you very much. Any questions, concerns? Once again, it's a two-thirds majority. All in favor of Article 24, signify with your green card. Anybody opposed to Article 24? Any abstentions to Article 24? Article 24 passes unanimously, 114 to zero. Our final article of the night is Article 25. It's been submitted by petition, so I'll allow everyone a chance to read this article for a few moments, and then I'll read the motion. While everybody's reading that, I'm going to take a chance to thank, once again, the Hadley Mothers Club for all that they do on nights that we have meetings. They bring snacks and drinks. The moderator appreciates it, appreciates it. You know what I meant. And also, the hard-working people that check us in and out at all these meetings. Thank you very much. Mr. Donald Pip would like to make a comment. It's in regards to the article?
No, it's, I mean...
Okay.
I don't know if everyone's picked one of these up on the way in. If not, there's many more in the back, and we have extras at Town Hall. I just want to publicly thank our administrative assistant, Jennifer James. I can't even begin to tell you how many hours she put into this book to get it organized, proofreading it, chasing people down for departments for their reports, getting the pictures for the front and back and inside. We'll be entering this into the Massachusetts contests for town reports, and I think we've got a pretty good shot at winning.
I think Peg Jakonowski's here. She knows a little bit of something about putting one of those together. Okay, so, moving along, the motion for Article 25 reads, move, move that the town adopt the resolution as delineated in Article 25 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant for May 4, 2017, and incorporated by references herein. Is the petitioner present to speak to this article?
Yes.
All right, so, hold on one second. I'm looking, I'm looking to entertain a motion for Article 25. Do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. Now, you may speak.
Hi, everyone. I'm Will Neff, 5 West Street. So, the article's pretty long, and I think I'll try to just be brief in what I'm hoping to do here. You all have a chance to vote on this resolution, which essentially will send a message to our state and federal legislators about what the town of Hadley supports. It's a non-binding resolution, so we're essentially just expressing our support for something on state and federal levels. It's also nonpartisan. It's an issue of corruption in politics, specifically the way big money influences the decisions that politicians make and the way our elections are run. Essentially, what we're expressing support for through a vote of yes is that lobbyists are less influential in the lives of politicians and the operations of the government, and the power is more in the hands of the individual citizens, regardless of whether they have a lot of money or not. I think that sums it up pretty well. I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you. Many questions, concerns?
Another good, good thing to note is, there's about 20 towns in Western Mass that are also looking to pass this resolution at their town meetings, and it's already passed in three towns, Colrain, Hatfield, and South Hadley. So, this is part of a, hopefully, a growing movement in Massachusetts and across the country to show this type of support for new anti-corruption legislation.
Thank you. Like I stated, any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of Article 25, please signify with your green card. Opposed? Opposed? Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Abstentions?
No.
Thank you very much. Always helps to have that set eyes. Article passes one hundred and nine to one, with one abstention. That concludes all our articles for tonight. So at this time, I will declare town meeting officially closed. Thank you for coming.